This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the October 2, 2023, regular council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda tonight?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Ash. Would you call roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Any presentations tonight? I do not have a mayor's report. I was gonna do a packet trivia, but I decided. I want to catch you off guard.
Okay.
Any council committee meeting reports tonight?
Parks Committee, yes. Turns out that I should have brought an article. Trying to remember, because if I don't... Okay. They are wanting some status around the stuff that the senior center is getting for like senior workout equipment, whatever is going in the park.
Oh, okay. An update for that?
Yeah, because, so Steve Whiteman came in with his pavilion idea. And so they're just thinking if they are gonna make any sort of proposal, they would like to like have all the pieces and tie it together instead of having piecemeal projects happening.
But one isn't necessarily connected to the other?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
I know.
We can get them the update.
Okay. I can come get that from you. I just haven't since then.
Okay.
Um, the, and then they, I think we're gonna be putting in a couple work orders for Hopkins.
Okay.
I got a couple from me. Yes.
Okay. Then those are it.
And then they're wanting to know about the damage still on Webways, that are they still creating damage? And that's why it's not, that's what I told them was probably the case, but.
Yeah.
They wanted.
So once they get their lines all buttoned up, then they'll have the contractor come back and fix the pavement?
Okay. And then they asked if the Schaumburg thing was coming back to council. I said, we had already pretty much approved it pending their approval.
Yep, and they got the approval.
We handed off.
Just didn't, Dale and Claude had it nearly done for jamboree or done, and we just didn't get it up.
Okay.
We need the boom truck and.
And it doesn't stop time to come back for the plaque, right? You're just getting a plaque.
Yeah, I'm gonna try and figure out. I'm thinking something that references it on the entrance to Spencer Park instead of like a little hidden plaque that won't really be able to detail it out. So something on the Spencer plaque, like picnic shelter and the associated sign, blah, 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 blah.
Okay.
I'll run, I'll prove it through them though first.
Okay.
And council before we order it.
Um, okay. I think that that was pretty much it then.
I ask for clarification. You're just wanting the update of what the plan is for in the parks for senior exercise equipment, not Steve's thing, because I don't really know what's planned.
Correct.
Okay.
So they just wanted to know like what they're getting, if there's any kind of timeframe, if there was already an idea for where it should go, because nothing came to them about it.
Yeah, and it was in the original building of Spencer Park was the idea of kind of a senior path, and then maybe a loop, and in that loop would be a couple pieces of equipment, but I can get all that together.
Correct. I mean, I think because they're, they haven't like, he came in as public comment, so they didn't have time to hatch anything out, but it was like the idea of a pickleball court, which would be obviously very like senior focused, and then, um, like.
Feels like things are hurt now.
The ADA access. That area with the ADA access, and so they were like, well, if we're gonna also have senior equipment, it would be good to like, just think ahead of where that's all gonna be, so it makes sense in some way.
Yeah, there's already a plan for that loop and that path in the original Spencer Park construction, so I'll re-present all that.
That's, that would be good. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, oh, sorry. Are they having a November meeting? It's falling like the week of Thanksgiving.
Excellent question. I will point that out sooner than.
Okay, just so I know when to have the update ready for them.
Um, they may just want to move it.
One way or the other. Yep.
And I might find out some more information on that when I attend the senior board meeting on Friday.
They do have a couple elements that they're gonna try and have the seniors put at the, at that site. So the grant they're using, some of it, they want some in Spencer, some at the building.
Exactly, but I'm talking about the.
All over, the whole picture.
The grant they're trying to get for Spencer Park, seniors also.
Okay. Oh, and then they decided to have an election of officers.
Okay.
So that was interesting.
Are they gonna update Stephanie, or is the secretary gonna?
I don't know. They let me know.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Shari. Any other committee reports?
Public.
No public works? Okay. Thank you, Shari.
Yep.
Moving on to topics on the floor.
Okay, I have two. First, Amy Saloa regarding the homeless camp within the city.
Amy, you want to come to the dais and just state your name for the record, and then let me remind you that you have five minutes to present your proposal.
Yep. My name's Amy Saloa. I live at 1278 G Street, which is within the city limits of Veronia. I'm here tonight to inquire about city regulations regarding homeless camps within the city, or at least to make you aware of the problem. For about five years, we have had a homeless camp directly behind our home. We live on G Street, which is basically just up from the water plant on the other side of the road. This is somebody's property. I don't know if I can name his name, but anyway, it's a different property owner. There's no home, there's no water, there's no electricity, there's nothing back there. Although there have been several people living there for many years. They have tents, they have trailers, they have boats, they have, you name it, Conexes, random buildings, piles of junk. There are random people. You never know who's back there. Sometimes there's criminals back there. Sometimes there's loose pit holes back there. Animal control has been called. I've contacted the police several times over the years. I've contacted our enforcement or code enforcement officer. Haven't really gotten anywhere, so I'm a little bit frustrated with the situation. I was told that really the only thing that they could do was find them for using a road. So if you're familiar with how our streets are, but I know a lot of them are not developed. And so in our neighborhood, there's several streets, and Steve could probably answer exactly what street I'm talking about. I don't know if it matters, but I get them all mixed up because they crisscross. But this is an undeveloped road that they've been using for many years. In the summertime, it looks like there's a forest fire, because every time they drive up this thing, it's a plume of dust. You don't know if it's smoke or if it's dust. They run generators all night at times. There have been drug paraphernalia back there spotted on more than one occasion. It's just a mess. It's literally a disgusting mess that is directly behind my house. We are law-abiding citizens. We pay our taxes, which I believe that he has not paid his taxes for several years, yet he's been allowed to live like this and invite random people to live back on this property. I was told that he would be fine for using that road, whether he has or hasn't, I have no idea. But whether he has or hasn't, it hasn't stopped them from using it over the years. It's just super frustrating. They're not camping, so to not be confused with people that are camping, they are not camping. They live there all the time, and different people rotate in and out. You see random people going up our street, going down our street, going up State Street, going down State Street, and that's where they're going. I'm not comfortable with them back there. I walked back there yesterday. I usually don't go back there. That used to be where my kids played growing up, right? This is just empty property, somebody else's property, but they will play in the woods back there. And I won't even walk back there because it is so disgusting to me that this is happening feet beyond our property line. I'm just asking that something be done about this, or that somebody can finally give me an explanation that makes sense, because I have not gotten one in all the years that I've been down here complaining. So now I'm here complaining because I'm just super fed up with it. I think it is absolutely a sin that we have allowed this for this amount of time. So they're using the bathroom back there, contrary to what anybody says that they went up there and looked and didn't see any signage. Well, let me tell you, they live there. There's no outhouse, there's no hole, there's no, I mean, I don't know what they're doing, but they're contaminating the soil. If I want to go sell my house in the next couple years, guess what? That's gonna be a problem for our family. Because they take one look at what's directly behind us, and that's what they're gonna see. So I don't know. I had a hard time on the website, to be perfectly honest. I tried finding stuff. I found some information regarding, uh, living in trailers. I really couldn't find anything that was specific to homeless camps or camping. Maybe it's there, I just couldn't find it. My knowledge, they shouldn't be living like that. So, although I have to say, I would just, I understand that there's nothing that, probably anybody's gonna say to me tonight regarding this, but I sure would appreciate some kind of correspondence in the future regarding this matter.
Okay.
Because I'm just, I'm tired of coming down here and complaining, you know, and saying, hey, this is happening again, or this is going on. I mean, I worry about forest fire every single summer because they're back there, they burn in the summertime, they run their generator, they're smoking mess back there. I mean, like, it's not good. It's not good stuff that's happening back there. And like, we're surrounded by trees, so it's just a constant concern. And also just who's back there? You never know. Like, my kids are older now, but when they were younger, it was a concern leaving them home because God knows who's behind your house. I mean, they've come over, you know, some of the people have come over before for different reasons, and it's like, go away, I don't want them there. If they want to live there, then they should live there properly like everybody else does.
Okay.
So, that's it.
Thank you, Amy.
And my second one is Steve Weller, homeless situation off of East Avenue and Ice Street.
Steve Weller, 1264 G Street, Verona resident, been here a long time, 65 years almost. And I'll just follow up. Hadn't planned to speak, but when I found out Amy was here, what she was here for, I'll echo that. This has been, I live right next to Amy. This is in behind their property line. It comes up off of East Avenue, which is a platted street, which isn't developed. Many, many years ago, the property owner that is in question up there, Mr. Robert Wagner, he put in a, there was a road established, a cat road, way back before my wife and I ever bought our property to build our home on 25 years ago, so it's been there. He'd actually put a drainage ditch and such in there. I too am frustrated because we have been here many times. I've been, I think I even, if you look back in the records, I've been to council meetings in reference to this. And the situation is such, I was told by your code enforcement, Eva, that they're camping, and there's nothing that can be done about it. Well, I'll echo Amy's comments that that's beyond camping. They live there permanently. The mayor, Mr. Hobart, has been there, previous council member. I don't know if Josette's ever been up there and actually seen the situation, but it's been an ongoing and continuing problem for a number of years. It's interesting that you consistently get told that there's nothing that can be done when we know that they're in direct violation of some of the ordinances. And one of the ordinances, I'll state the ordinance number because I don't know it, but back in the initial onset, when Mr. Hobart was up there with me, we looked at it, the ordinance said that a Conex box, which if you're not familiar with what that is, it's a container box that they ship things overseas and what have you, was not legal to be on a city property and be used. Initially, it was brought in, dumped on East Avenue, then it was eventually by Mr. Wagner, yarded up to the property. And then he was told that if he could get it out of the sight of the paved, improved street, then it would be acceptable. So that's what's been done. I've been told too that there's been fines levied in regards to the use of the road because it's not improved and shouldn't be used. Whether the city's collected any of those fines, any of that's been collected, I have no idea. In reference to that taxes, my wife and I were approached by Mr. Wagner in August, I believe it was, somewhere around the middle of August, if we were interested in buying any more of his property. We'd already purchased two of his lots. Immediately, we said, yes, we'd be interested, and asked for what kind of a price he would have, and so on and so forth. And we negotiated with him, and we ended up purchasing two more lots of his property, where at that present time, he had all this junk. And I'll just say it's junk. Some people might think it's not, but let me tell you, it's junk. And so they started the process of moving the material to the adjacent piece of his property, which is further up against a steep part of the hill. They managed to get all that done with some of my assistance to help them, and we got some of their junk hauled off and got rid of it. But there's more there now. It's just been added to. So I too agree. I know that there's been illegal activity that goes on in there. In fact, when we were actually in the process, there was, I don't know who it was, but there was another young male there that was definitely smoking crank. I mean, there was no doubt in my mind. The pipes around the stumps and everything else over there. So as a safety issue in reference to the city, it's time something gets done. And we've seen what's gone on in the larger metropolitan areas. It's disgusting. There's no reason that city government can't levy a situation where something can happen. I'm doing my best to mitigate the problem by buying as much of his land as he'll sell me. I know Frank and Amy would like to have a couple more lots that are in behind them. And he's being pushed into a corner to where he basically has nothing left. He's got a little tiny bit of property. The man basically has little or nothing to his name. We paid his back taxes for him so that he was off the hook, because they were ready to come again. They were ready to foreclose accounting ones. So I think patience is at a point where it's done, and I think it's time, something needs to be done. And I agree that we've been to the law enforcement. I know they've been there. I'm aware of that. Aware that they've cited Mr. Wagner, but it's time the mess gets cleaned up. Because as Amy said, should I want to sell my property, and there's times when I get to the point in this community I'm about ready to, that it's going to affect my property values. Because I'm, who wants to buy and live next to somebody that's in a bum situation? Go to the homeless camps on streets in Portland. Nobody wants to live next to that. I mean, you look at what's going on in the news media. Businesses are pulling out right and left down there because of the crime problems that it creates. We've just been, we've been fortunate, at least from my perspective, I can speak on my behalf. Because the best of my knowledge, we've had nothing stolen, nothing taken away, we've never had to do anything backwards or like to our property, but the potential is greatly there, especially as Amy said, the number of people that come and go from that place, we can't help but know that there's probably criminal activity with drugs and whatever else. So on behalf of my family, my home, I would like to see something done. And it's to the point where it's in your hands, it's in the county, it's city government to make your enforcement people will have to make it happen. So any questions for me?
Oh.
Because like Amy said, it's been a good five years that this has been going on, and nothing's ever been done. So we would appreciate some action, not just lip service, action. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Well, we, we can't give you any answers right now as to what. I, I can probably promise you that we've recorded all your concerns and written them down, and in the near future, I hope you can approach us and we could have a discussion about those, so.
Is that your phone?
Okay.
Be business for yourself. You can learn at all times.
Okay. Consent agenda for acceptance. Moving on to consent agenda for approval. City council meeting minutes for September 18, 2023. Any questions or discussions?
I move to approve the consent agenda for you.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Webb. Would you call roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Thank you. Any unfinished business tonight? No? Moving right into new business, staff report, council training approval.
What we have before you is brought by me at your guys' request. I requested, I know, a proposal from a facilitator for council training. I explained to her what was requested of me, and that you guys wanted training on kind of higher level council operations, running meetings, working together, staff. And I also told her some sort of team building, something that would help us communicate, operate more fluidly. And then I didn't, I told her it wasn't necessarily a, oftentimes you're setting priorities, and we are already doing that. So what this is gonna do is, my understanding is, the training of how councils and staff and city administrators versus managers all should function, what your guys' roles are, what our roles are, the team building exercises, and then kind of bringing it together of how to use that over the next two years to accomplish our project priorities. That's what we have before you.
So I had a question. We do go with this form of training. Are they presenting it four Saturdays? Is that what it?
No, it'd be one Saturday.
Just a one-shot deal?
Yeah, one, six to eight hour Saturday.
Yeah.
Let's see, when there's gonna be interviews for staff and counselors?
Yeah. There'd be some work before.
They'll interview us.
Oh. Like what's working and not working for each of you, so that they bring something to the table that addresses all of your individual.
Yeah. What you see as a need, what you see as successes, what you're hoping to get from this training, what you're hoping the whole group gets from it, and then they kind of tailor what that actual day is gonna look like based off of all those interviews.
I'm, I'm gonna ask the question to the council. We haven't really talked about it until we've been presented with this. But my question is, would we get the same results if we came in on a workshop Saturday and went over our council rules that we're approving tonight in our city charter? And had a informal, deliver a couple pizzas for lunch, sit down for the whole day, talk about how we operate for free, maybe pay for a couple pizzas, rather than paying $6,700 for a one-day training session? Can we get the same results? Because I think a lot, majority of our constituents would think that that $6,700 would be better spent in other areas. That, I'm just presenting the question to the council.
I'll let somebody else speak first.
Well, I don't know if anyone else wants to speak.
Then I'll go for it. So there is a lot of learning that needs to be accomplished with this council, with any council, not just specifically us, but specifically our council. There are processes that have not been followed. There are things that we have not done. There are things that we have done inappropriately. And one of the reasons this training came up was because we were putting ourselves and our, our city council at risk by doing some of these actions. And until we understand the value of training, and if we want to do it through League of Oregon Cities, and they have a free training that we are all gonna actually attend, that might, and I don't know that they're free, they may be less expensive. They've never been free in the past, but they have been less expensive than this, but is everybody gonna attend? And are we, is it going to have the same effect of helping each of us understand individually our roles here at the city and how to engage with our support staff and our city administrator? It is not just about what our council rules are and aren't, and I absolutely believe we should be doing what you've suggested as well. But having a facilitator and having someone who's experienced the training and maybe not exactly what, I mean, this, this is a guideline. And as Stephanie said, it's gonna be a lot about finding out from each of us what we expect to get out of it. It's not Susan's idea, or Bear's idea, or Dale's idea of what needs to be accomplished. It's a compilation of all those things, but understanding our jobs, which I don't think we all do.
Stephanie, do you remember, I think in my first year, I attended, well, there was, most of our council attended the LOC over at McMinnville that one day, and you were over.
Left to Essentials.
Yeah, that was a very good session. What did it cost the city for us to do that?
I don't remember.
I think that might have been included in our fee.
Okay.
Certain ones that they promote and do, and you can go to, like you travel to them. I think they host those specific ones to the fee, for the fee you pay. Oregon Cities, that's a city, you can get access to their already scheduled classes.
And then, I think, I believe my second year, we had training with John Morgan. And do you remember what, I think it seemed to me it was $2,000 or something like that.
Oh, it was definitely more than that.
I thought it was like four.
Was it that much?
Yeah, it was, it was four or five.
Was it? Yeah.
Most of these facilitators that come in and train boards and councils and school boards, they're pretty similarly across the board, fee-wise.
I know when I attended, I attended a couple of them also through League of Oregon Cities and Forest Grove and other places. And they were, they did charge because there are, I mean, there's lunch and there's the building and all that. And I believe it was about $100 per person.
Yeah. Some of them are hosted, and you can pay for the entry, member fee. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, you're not allowed to speak at all.
Not at this time.
So one of the things is, council in Veronia has been very anti-training for the last 20 years. And it's really something, maybe this isn't what you guys choose, but we should get in a regular pattern, partly because we have new members who are coming on kind of blind, right? Or, or we filled in positions, so, or they didn't run, they got appointed, so they weren't kind of in the scheme of it. So some sort of refresher should really be in our planning on a regular basis, just so everyone's kept abreast of the kind of job and the requirements and what's expected and all that. The other thing is, is while I get the constituents' version of it, this is earmarked in training. It's not like we're pulling it from somewhere else. So there is a training budget, and that's for staff. Pays for Stephanie to go to city recorders conference. It can pay for council training. Pays for different things other than police. They have their own training budget, but the rest of us should. pays for different things other than police, they have their own training budget, but the rest of us should, any staff members or council that training budgets earmarked every year for that exact expenditure, just so you know. We're not pulling it from some other plan, it is planned for this, you know, that's one of the places it comes out of.
This is being proposed out of professional services.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I'm, I'm not opposed, I, I like learning, I always think everyone has infinite need to learn, but I mean, the price does seem high, but I have nothing to compare it to, and I don't know the value of it because I haven't done it before, so I guess. I don't have any strong opinion.
Okay. Dale?
Yeah, I know the one with John Morgan. Yeah, I, I know myself and a few of the other counselors on that one, we didn't really feel that the value was all that good coming out of it. But like Reece says, I'm always willing to learn. Thing that I see though is we're talking about these interactions, how we interact with each other, counselors and staff. To me, it seems like it'd be worth our time to enshrine these learnings. So we're not paying, you know, we shouldn't have to be paying these professionals time after time, every time there's a new council up here. We should be able to document some examples of how we, how to interact and not to interact. Steph, there's a packet to a new counselor when they come in and go, you know, we know you're new, or maybe you're not, but this is what we've gleaned over the years, the best practices. So they at least have some basis to go from. The, the training of, for people maybe trying to get along, I think there's just societal differences in people. I don't know that this will bridge that, I don't, I think that's a tough.
I think, I, so not to interrupt, not to interrupt you, I'm pulling a Bruce, but I'm going to do it. I think part of the reason routine training is because those people are going to constantly change, potentially these people are going to constantly change and be different people. So where an example you put in that worked for you guys and me, or you guys and Stephanie, if one of us is not here, or you guys aren't here, then that example doesn't replicate as good, or is, maybe someone's totally in learning style, or, or how they perceive what you're encoding or decoding what each other says. It's about learning who each other are and how, when I talk to Dale and I talk to Rick, the differences in those, how you guys take what I'm saying, right? So that's something, and maybe it doesn't need to be a full-on training, but that kind of refresher of here's all the players, how do we interact with each other, how does one person, because in, like societal differences, one person can be totally offended by something, or think I'm upset because of the tone of my voice, where that's just my tone. And really, it's the words I'm saying that are how I feel about it. So people are going to have societal differences, but if they can learn to engage with someone where they're at and how they take and give information, I think that's very valuable. We, Scott and I both participated, and I think Susan, in Ford Family, and part of that is that, learning each other, who is that person, how do they see the world, how do they get from point A to point B in a project? Some people see, know the project and they see the end, and some people break the project into a million pieces. So I need to know, who are the players up there? And are you a guy that I can say, we're going to do a sewer project and you just want to know what it's going to look like in the end? And Susan may want to know all, every step in between. So that's the kind of learning about each other that I think is valuable in trainings. Whether or not you pick this proposal, I think that's very valuable. Because it helps me to then relay what each of you need in my information and not just go to what one person needs that's similar to me. Does that make sense? So that's one of the values I see in training. But it doesn't have, I'm not like, you guys do what you're going to do, but.
But I think probably one of the most valuable things for, in a new packet for a new counselor is get your behind down here and interact with staff
Yeah.
and talk to your city administrator. And, and, and that's the learning process, I think that you get, you get that back and forth and know
Right.
more about each other and, and how each one kind of, what they want.
Takes it in, yeah, yeah.
And I, you know, I agree, I was probably the trainers coming, can come in here and we can all find out what our personalities are and you can do all that fancy stuff. But to me, it seems like it's a continuum for these people, I mean, and maybe that, maybe that's the right way to do it. When, how long was it since we've had John Morgan, that was a previous council, wasn't it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Within four years ago or so.
It's been a good three, four years.
It was before 2020, yeah, it was before COVID.
It was 2019.
18 or 19, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's been a few years.
Four years.
Yeah.
Or so.
Yeah.
You know, that one there, the John Morgan one, I don't know, really helped a lot. Because he didn't really do what I see these people are probably going to do. That one mainly was a city administrator. What's that from?
Remind you that she was also one of the proposals.
Yeah.
And she's the one that staff recommended.
And we took the cheaper one?
And the different gender, I think is what was the makeup of the decision, a little bit? Pretty sure.
Not for me.
Okay.
I think you were the only one who voted against it, actually. I don't remember though.
It's good job Dale.
Well, I mean, I don't think, I don't think like an onboarding packet and us getting a training are mutually exclusive. Obviously, and just because you had a bad experience in the past doesn't mean a different service is also going to be. I mean, I understand, but yeah.
Well, I personally have an opinion that every new counselor or mayor that comes in, I wouldn't say it's mandatory, but it would behoove the council and the city if they could attend their first year on LLC training session, that was very beneficial for me. I got more out of that than John Morgan training personally.
Yeah.
And, and I think it's really important, and I can emphasize the fact that you got to read and study your council rules. And we're all different, but we have a, we have a, on the wall outside, there's a mission, city mission statement, and I take that very seriously. And I read it from time to time when I walk in the door and we have a city charter and council rules, and those are, so we could operate and serve the city to the T in that mission statement, so I would, I would be in favor of attending an LLC training session, our group, and, and rather than doing this, that's just my vote, so.
I would like to ask you then, how does that help this group moderate working with our city administrator and city recorder?
Josette, all the time, five years I've been here, her door has always been open to me. I feel I could go in and talk to her about anything. And really, my job is to run the meetings and hopefully make sure and choose the agenda for the following, you know, I, I, I've been doing that for now, four years. Meeting with Josette a week prior to the packet coming out, setting the agenda. Anybody that wants to put anything on the agenda, come talk to me, we'll get it on there. Part of the council rules, as far as us being effective as a body, if you have an issue with myself, say for example, I hope you can feel like you can come to me and, and talk to me about it rather, you know, rather than not. And so, the more we communicate and feel like we could talk about anything without it being in a serial meeting, that's the way we should operate. And I make mistakes from time to time, I think I'm getting pretty good at running these meetings now. And, but sometimes I make mistakes and you know, I'm not perfect either, but I, 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 I think we can get the same result out of some LLC training. It's a, in fact, some of these people in this, I think are LLC members, they're Mrs. Wilson sounds for mayor.
Shouldn't, I don't think so, it doesn't work for a city anymore.
Okay. But anyway, that's about all I have to say on it.
So I have a question on her staff, because you're saying this consulting firm is highly recommended. So do you guys have a rare question for a non-factual biased opinion? Do you have preference, you don't have to tell me why, which you would like to see us attend?
If this or LLC?
You want to go? I think individual training would be a lot more valuable. I don't think that we would get anything out of just getting together and having pizza, sorry, and talking about it, because we won't be honest with each other and people will get hurt feelings, because we'll have no moderator, no mom or dad there. League of Oregon Cities trainings, I've been to them with you guys, they're really generalized, it's, I mean, you're going to hear things from the city of Forest Grove's mayor that have nothing to do with us and are not how we operate. Japan, we do not, for a good example, I think either not having one at all and just saying, we're fine, we'll figure it out, continue on, or hiring a facilitator who will come here and train us individually and help us function better as a unit and to stay in our roles both ways would be a lot more valuable. I'm saying she's highly recommended because she is the only, SSW Consulting is the only firm that any other city recommended to me. Any of them. There's a mid-land council of governments who does a training, they don't service our area, no one recommended them, and they are on my list serve, every single one. And I was honest with them and told them some of our problems and what we were kind of looking for, and they said, there will be no problem, she can handle it. She's been a city employee, she's been a facilitator, she has experience with it. She gets it, but again, I don't really, I like these trainings, I think if you guys don't move forward with it, I'll be really hesitant to reach out again for a third time to get a proposal from her in the future when somebody asks me for it.
Because she'll be like, are you ever gonna?
It's me again, can you write me another proposal?
Yeah.
But I won't lose sleep tonight if you guys decide not to do it. I care, but I don't care, I have no choice, so.
Well, I would hope, if I think of myself, right, as an employee and colleague elsewhere, that if I went to a colleague or supervisor and suggested to them that they need training or development, right, in their teamwork or leadership skills, that they would be open to that suggestion. So I think that hearing from staff that they would support and desire us to do that is an offer of mine.
Show me the answer.
If you'd like.
Well, I just, I, I think the LLC ones do give us the basics of what elected officials have to do in the state by their elected mandate. I think just having been in Ford Family, the connections I have and the way I understand the people that were in my cohort, I'm still friends with all of them in this town today. And understand, when they come at me hot, I'm like, oh, okay, okay, I know what personality types they are, I know what's going to really send them further and fuel the fire, and I know what's going to douse the flames, because I know who, where they're coming from. And I think as council, that's hard with staff, I mean, we're on the production and, right, we're producing things for you guys and we're showing you what has been produced. And so not understanding people as clearly is, presents difficulties at times, because you'll say something and someone won't respond at all and you're like, okay then. You know, you're kind of like, where do I go now as an employee? So, I would be for it, but, like Stephanie, I won't lose sleep, it's your guys' decision, so.
Counselor Norman, do you have anything to add?
It is a hefty price, which is very concerning that it could be used elsewhere, but I don't mind learning.
Yeah. I don't either.
Take the price, Mr. Mayor, if we prorate it out for the years that we're here, it drops considerably.
If you divide it.
A person per year?
Yeah. I don't think he can speak, Steve.
Go ahead. I would just encourage you, having sat on a former elected official board myself for about eight years, that training is very valuable. I understand what you're seeing in the Oregon cities. To take it a step further might be very beneficial, and a little bit of money, it seems like a lot in some respects, but a little bit of money you might spend there may save you tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars if you get yourself in the bind and give it a quarter off. And know that those trainings can help you project and go further.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thanks, Steve. Okay.
I'll make a motion then.
Go ahead Dale.
I'll make a motion that authorize city administrator contract with SSW Consulting for training.
Sound my calls. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Norman seconded, when you call roll please, Stephanie.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
You guys want to send me your availability or do you want me to just mark it down today? Did you guys have them prepared?
Dates.
I'm prepared.
Okay. Start with November, November's in, February's in November. Is anybody busy the 4th?
So we're looking at a Saturday, right?
So I don't have her availability, but I want to get dates that absolutely do not work for you guys, so that I can bring it to her and say they're available on the 4th. So not the 25th, obviously.
Not the 25th.
I am not available the 11th.
And I think someone said the 18th, they weren't.
18th, I wasn't going to be here. 18th, I wasn't going to be here.
Dare I ask about the 4th?
I'm not the 4th.
December 2nd.
Probably not, case I'm packing a bull out of the woods that day.
December 9th.
I can't do the 9th.
That should be good.
Yeah. 23rd, that's Christmas.
Two plus Christmas.
30th is New Year's. January 6th. All's well.
I'm good there.
January 13th. Am I going too fast?
No, that's the Martin Luther King Junior Day is on Monday and I don't know how many people are going to be taking a longer weekend.
You have plans as a potential worst-case Ontario? Preferably not.
Preferably not, Dale.
Prefer no. The 20th.
Okay, from me.
You guys are getting open next year, eh? The 3rd.
You do.
Of February.
Yep, garden.
Again, that's a three-day weekend for Christmas Day.
The 24th.
Not a chance.
Not a chance?
Pardon?
Is it your birthday?
No.
Oh.
I'm heading to Florida.
Oh.
Oh darn, sorry.
All right, so I think I've got a couple of dates to work with. I will reach out to her and I'll let you know as soon as I hear back.
I'll need to back, uh, December 2nd is a chance I wouldn't be available.
Okay, I asked that one out.
Thanks, Donald. That's my birthday and I don't want to spend my birthday with everybody. I'm, I know, I'm sorry.
I just said.
I went to the dentist on my birthday last.
Hey, you cancel that appointment next time, Rick.
Yeah.
I hope it wasn't all day.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie.
And thank you for coming prepared.
Business from the departments. Okay. Ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number 2023-12, adopting new council rule.
Okay, so what you have before you is a resolution updating your council rules after extensive work sessions and interactions with our city attorney. The changes to your council rules are exactly what I brought last time. The only one that changed would be exhibit.
C.
C. Letter E was mistakenly left, that should have been removed. I gave you guys an updated version, but that's the change.
Yeah, I'll miss you.
And then, um, I didn't set it up there for you.
You need a new one.
Sorry. I think I got some wrong, but it, so, well, actually in your packet, you'll see what was removed, so welcome. So E was taken out per Counselor Webb and actually Wagner brought it up to me also. That was supposed to be removed and we, and D, it'll say an employee or citizen complaint. And actually in reviewing it with Josette just shortly before this meeting, there's one more change we would like to have you do. In D, the second sentence says, the mayor shall notify the city administrator executive session in conformance with blah, blah, blah. I usually do that because I ask her if she wants it in open or closed session. So with your guys' thing, we'll put, it's not the mayor, it'll say the city reporter. And that's because I send her email. I have to respond, I have it, yes, respond to me and have it all documented. It's per ORS, actually.
I'm okay with it.
You have an objection?
I, so there are, I apologize for not having read this as thoroughly as I should have before the last meeting. There are some inconsistencies and duplications in here and unnecessary things, so there is nothing, I, the only thing in here, there, one thing is that it talks about being placed on leave pending investigation.
Which one?
Letter E.
Okay.
That kind of in the middle. Council may also decide whether the city administrator shall be placed on leave pending investigation, does not say paid or unpaid. That needs to be detailed. I, it needs all that. Being placed on.
We're laying out the process for you guys.
Okay.
Well, because Mike, I have the, kind of the same concern. It just says that, so should it help you guys in like, like if you're doing this, then this, doing this, then this?
Because there, there's references here that say, in this policy, this is how you do it, but it doesn't really detail some of the things. And so I, I'm, I'm not comfortable with approving this particular thing right now. It also does not address, one of the things we talked about, which was if there's a personal relationship or knowledge or involvement of a city council member, that they should be declaring that clearly and whether or not they have to accuse themselves. I understand that that's all part of the process of whether or not you have actual or perceived conflict of interest or whatever, but I, I think that needs to be in here because we talked about it and I, I felt it was kind of.
Yeah, I don't see that either.
Stephanie, did, did our attorney draft this?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was put.
I thought it was in.
So B, the mayor, that, so that was addressed.
It just says that the mayor designate somebody else, but.
No, the council designates who it's going to be. The mayor or other member of the council may be designated by the council to be responsible for receipt of complaints against the city administrator. If the council has not designated, I don't know why I'm struggling on that. A specific council member for receipt, receipt, the mayor shall be, oh, yeah.
But we're not really talking about, we're not talking about receiving it.
That's just receiving.
Yeah, we're talking about kind of overseeing the process of.
Right.
So I'm wondering, did Ruben reference your guys' complaint? Because the handbook really lays out how I follow, if I get a complaint about an employee and it's on the formal letterhead signed, they're testing to it, what I'm supposed to do. I think you're looking for some of that to be interjected in this, where it says, if you're doing this, then blah, 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 blah. If you're going to do this, blah, 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 blah. Something like that.
I would be much more comfortable because.
Having him add in.
This either needs to be very more specific like that or just you need to follow the process.
Mm-hmm.
And there's, I, there's some other things that just need to be taken out because it's like in E, it says, if there is a meeting of the council, the council shall review the complaint. Well, the paragraph before states that there will be a meeting.
Yeah.
E were removing.
No, it's on the new E.
Oh, the new one, P, sorry.
That's what they're saying, so.
New E.
Yeah, new E. Says if, if there is a count, meeting of the council, but there is a meeting of the council because it states so the previous paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so there's, I, I understand, I think you got this just quickly because it needed to be fast and so it could get in, but I just, there's, there's a couple of other things that just need to be wordsmithed. And it's not just because I, not just because it's my style to do something, there's just some things in here that need to be, in my opinion, and I am just one person.
Well, now I wish I had taken notes at the last meeting because if that got left out, what if other things got left out? Did you take notes at the last meeting?
Yeah, but I don't bring them.
Right, but maybe we should look over and make sure there wasn't anything else that we asked where it's not in here.
Look at the meeting minutes, it has a bullet list.
Yeah.
Oh, please, imagine that.
Stephanie knows her shot weight.
Then we approve.
I forgot about that part.
And that whole block is exactly what I sent to him.
Amy and Steve, if you, you don't need to.
This is boring.
No, no.
Paid that entire time.
Don't feel like you have to stay for the whole meeting.
She has to sit through city, through school board meetings all the time, so this is probably more entertaining.
I don't know.
So I think the part where the individual bias was addressed was in E. The council will determine whether the complaint should be investigated, designate a council member to be responsible for handling the complaint and determine who should conduct the investigation. So that's, that's where you guys would say, as a group, we believe that you have a bias. I would prefer if you, what?
Nothing.
Go ahead.
I, I have to.
I don't want to keep going.
No, no, keep going.
You have to go.
I'll wait for a minute.
I mean, it's incumbent as a counselor, if you have a bias or a conflict, that you declare it. I mean, that's in your rules. I mean.
Bias isn't illegal and conflict of interest is.
Yeah.
It's up to you guys, this body's saying, my preferences. You guys can always request them to.
It says in B that we were amending that all complaints are sent to the city attorney for review and legal opinion, and I don't see that in B.
That is, yeah.
Um, yeah, it's C, the last sentence in C.
All complaints shall be.
So it was put in the C, so, okay, I was only looking.
Yeah, everything moved around a little, or not every, a couple of things did.
Yeah, so I just think item three was, it says that handling complaints designates the member responsible for handing complaints on a case-by-case basis, and I don't think that that is achieved.
So can I, can I propose something? Why is this not in the city administrator ordinance and out of the council rules?
Because it's the same with, with your guys' or your review process is in here. It's in their rules for how to operate.
Okay.
So it's policy versus.
Because I'm wondering, like, the way the employee handbook has the employee, like, it seems like maybe the discipline and how that goes down, discipline, correction, investigation, whatever, I'm wondering if it should be in that resolution or ordinance for city administrator? Like how you hire and fire and how you discipline that person? I don't know.
You're probably right, it should be in there, so.
Yeah, and then it's.
Administrator.
Then you could have it reference that ordinance and then that could change on its own should something go awry and you want to tweak it, you don't have to go back and undo your rules where it's, I don't know.
Resolutions are easier to change because they're policies.
Yeah.
And ordinances are much more difficult to change.
Is it an ordinance or a resolution?
What?
City administrator.
You're in an ordinance because it's establishing you.
Oh, okay. So maybe that's not the right.
It's not, it's different.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
It's a resolution.
Yeah.
It's policy, not law.
Well, what if it went in the handbook?
It could.
For all employees of the city, including this employee.
It's kind of like how the CBA is separate.
Yeah, that's true.
They operate something different than we do also.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, it's up to you guys, but.
No, I'm just trying to.
I, I don't disagree with the idea that the rules are how we do our business up here and how we conduct ourselves in our daily work. And I'm not saying that place against city administrator wouldn't be that or the council evaluation, but wouldn't it make more sense to pull council evaluation and the complaint process into separate?
This is basically codifying it.
I under.
Looking at all together.
But I'm trying to see if we can, we couldn't approve them because we're trying to change them.
Yeah.
By anyway.
Yeah.
I'm allowed to do, so it's going to have to be continued anyway, right?
Do you want to have a work session with Ruben?
Yes, please. I would like to.
These are all.
Where it would be long.
Instead of the back and forth, because I just take exactly what you guys say and give it to him and then I take it and I give it to you and if you guys want to change it more, it seems like maybe it'd be good to have him.
That's like a good idea.
And we could maybe talk to him about what would constitute placing an administrator on leave or not, you know, what's the criteria?
Yeah.
You know, I have something to back my mind, but I don't know if that's appropriate.
Right, right.
Then you guys can talk some more and ask why it's this way or why we should do it the other way and he can explain how.
Yeah.
And we want to get this right.
Yeah, oh, 100%.
So.
It's not my process. Are you guys in favor of that?
Sure.
Okay. But I will reach out to Ruben, see what his availability is and we'll get it scheduled.
And maybe you could do, do it the hour before.
A meeting.
A meeting.
Yeah.
If you guys can make it an hour before, then you're not trying to get a.
Questions lined up and ready to go.
Yeah, and maybe we get you guys' updated version clarifying or cleaning up this draft even further or something.
That's what we used to do, and if you're only going for one thing.
Yeah.
It's surprising how effective.
What it can be, yeah.
Let's try to document the changes that we want to see go into it and, and notify them first before the meeting.
Yeah, I'll take all this and I'll give it to him.
Okay.
These are the things that they're kind of looking to see put into the rules and policy.
Right.
And they want to talk to you about why things are.
Well, and clarification of what happens when, kind of, yeah.
Yeah.
So you need a motion for someone to table it, right?
Yeah. Other motion, but I guess we can just. Yeah, we can do it again. Get to the right spot on my.
Table it too.
Do we want to wait for Counselor Wagner to return or?
I don't think that's necessary. She just said that she was in favor of it. It won't be a vote, but.
Yeah.
So you just want a general consensus from?
So if you could make a motion to table the decision for resolution number 2023-12.
Okay.
Until a time when we can have a work session with the city attorney so he can discuss the process. Period.
I will move to table resolution number 2023-12 until such time that we can meet with the city attorney and.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Webb. Would you call roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Or Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner is absent, motion.
Coming in.
Want to place a vote? So.
We're tabling to a future date.
Until we can have a work session with the city attorney to redraft.
Awesome.
Like to vote?
Yes, want to vote? So yes?
Counselor Wagner?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, resolution number 2023-13, amending the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. Could be found on page 28.
Okay, this isn't really mine, but as I drafted the resolution, I'll go ahead and present it. During the audit process, it was discovered that some numbers were, and amounts were either entered incorrectly or entirely excluded. And so there is an updated document in front of you to adopt amending the budget. It is not a supplemental. These numbers were already in the budget that was presented to you, but they were on the page that was brought to you. Nothing's changing, just the sheet. on the page that was brought to you, nothing's changing, just the sheet.
Auditors are very thorough.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Which is great.
Dollar.
Which is great.
That's why we have them.
Right.
Yeah.
Very good. Any questions or discussion?
Need to vote?
A motion.
Yeah, okay, I'll move to approve resolution 2023-09, adopting.
13.
13.
Dash 13.
Amending 2023 F0.
Just kidding. I will move to adopt resolution 2023-13, amending resolution 2023-9 and adopting an amended fiscal year budget for 2023, 2024.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Wagner, would you call the roll again, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Mayor Hofer.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Correspondence, city county dinner invite. Next week, I believe, on the 10th of October in Rainier. I am planning on attending, I've already RSVP'd.
I will be attending.
I cannot attend.
Two.
So I will RSVP to you guys, and then Rick, if you would bring me in some money.
I will.
And then Donald, and we will make sure that they're both included on the check.
Wonderful. And that's at 5:30. And that is over in the city of Rainier, 106 West B Street, I'm gonna have to Google that. I haven't been over there, I don't believe. So it'll be a new experience for me.
I think it's actually at the address at the top, 48.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the city address.
Oh, okay.
It's at the senior center.
Senior Center, good.
Oh, that is.
Thank you for that correction.
Yeah, I don't want to send you to City Hall.
That is confusing.
It is.
There are so many people are going to go there.
Hopefully, put a sign that says we're at the senior center, this address.
Okay. Letter of support request from Michael Calhoun.
So Michael is working with St. Stewart and the county to get the CZ Trail on the National Recreational Trail, sorry, the Banks Vernonia Linear Trail, CZ Trail already has that certification. So attached is the letter, if you guys are in agreement, then we will print it and have the mayor sign it as your letter of support. Absolutely, yes.
Absolutely. We'll need another motion.
I will move that we sign the letter of support from the city of Vernonia for the Banks Vernonia Trail to be certified as a national recreational trail.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Webb.
I have a question.
Sure.
Would it be beneficial if all the counselors also signed it, so it wasn't just from the mayor, that it was actually from the council? I mean, it's just.
I don't know.
Just a courtesy thing, I mean, it's, I, I, not to dismiss your role as mayor, but if, you know, absolutely there's times when the mayor should only, you know, only the mayor should be signing things. I was just wondering, because this is, we're all excited about it, and it's just a question.
What says it's from the city of Vernonia, it's not just from councils, but.
That's true. It was just a question, I'm ready, I'm happy to vote on it if you want. I will move to sleep over.
Okay.
Did I get a second on, oh.
Yeah, Ash and Ben, yep.
Would you call?
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner. Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Set you up for that. Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Mayor Hofer.
Definitely an aye.
Motion carried. Thought you were gonna say no for a minute there.
No, I, I was a part of the CZ Trail, well, I wasn't a part of it, but I was in a way when I was interviewed by Channel 6 and talked about the CZ Trail being recognized on the federal level and on national trails, I think that's awesome. And it is really quite a, quite a deal for our community here because to have the, not only the CZ Trail, but the Banks Linear Trail recognized on a federal level is huge, and it only assists right in the middle of it, and so we, we get, we benefit from it greatly, like Michael said, so it's a really good thing. Okay, city administrator report.
Okay, so, um, still anticipating the DQ's gonna test the well of Mary Ann Odom's this month. We have not heard anything on the SCA, but that's not surprising. Still no updates, still no response from the storm-ready city people. Staff did have the FEMA Community Assistance Visit on Wednesday, the 27th, we're doing a great job managing the floodplain. There were a few specific requests regarding record-keeping processes that we're working on to comply with their regulations. We are keeping all the floodplain development permits, they want a copy of everyone in a binder just for them. And they also want a copy of every elevation cert in the floodplain that we get in a binder just for them, okay. We will be getting the document that outlines what else they want from our visit within a month. They told us they'd have it to us within a month, so. And then we'll get those dealt with and get this Community Assistance Visit closed out. The ODFW Review Committee has recommended that our dock replacement project get funded in this cycle. The commission will hold a meeting December 15th to give the final approval of the list of recommended projects, and once final approval is given, we can order the dock replacement platforms and the walk-on dock. The goal would have them built and installed in late spring of 2024. Public Works interview, so Sheila Parrott from the Public Works Committee, Jeff Birch and I interviewed an applicant from a utility worker position, this applicant had turned in their application when we posted it the first time. And so an offer of employment was given to Wayne Curry, and he starts his three-month probationary period today, so he's on the job. Staff walked DOT in a project meeting for all of the ramps that are slated to be put in the downtown core on Highway 47, ADA ramps in the downtown. It's slated for next year, really, it's probably more like 2025, that's how their timeline's running. We walked the project, we discussed our issues, they don't really care about our issues. Okay, and then we'll meet again via Zoom to see their final project details. Yeah, they don't care, they just are gonna put in what they put in, and if we rip it out three years after that, to, like, one of them was the alignment of weed. So we're doing right now with the sewer project, we're acquiring some of that right-of-way. Bateman's are giving us the right-of-way that is their old railroad grade, which comes in front of the Wana parking lot, we're having that designated as its own little square in the hopes that we can just hand it to Wana, but that would realign the right-of-way of weed, they're going off the sidewalk and having it come straight across where it's not really gonna be in the right-of-way, so we discussed that with them and asked them not to put one in right where people, because people still use that approach out of Wana that's not on weed, it's their old driveway approach. So we'll see what they come back with, we pushed really hard back on that. We also pushed really hard back on the ramp they want to do across the street where the old, the only place I know that it's the most easterly side of Grant. It's there where the old payphone used to be, if anyone's lived here long enough, they're gonna bring one straight across from there or towards Myers Ramp, and I'm like, this building's 100 years old, and he brings cars out that, those doors, and what are you, what are you doing? They don't, they are just following the lawsuit, and they're gonna put whatever in, and I'm like, okay. And I asked had you, if they had talked to him, and they said, we don't need to because it's in the ODOT's right-of-way. So I'm sure. Whatever. They, you know, okay. They also are going to be increasing, we have to move the City Hall sign. They are, they're increasing the width of that to get a flat platform, they don't like the rise of how the sidewalk comes up. It's so ridiculous, but we're under their jurisdiction, so. We'll see the final details in the Zoom meeting. We have, as I stated to you guys before, we've been fixing all the park door, restroom doors, and we're ordering new ones for Hawkins after Salmon Festival this weekend, it'll be closed for the winter. And so that'll give Mitch time to kind of redo the bathroom fixes on the inside and then replace the doors with new working doors. And they'll have, like, security panels where people try to pry open, where they can see the mechanism, they try to pry those open and then they yank on the door, and the doors are metal, but the foam core inside the door breaks, and then the top of the door doesn't sit flush, so then the magnets don't work, so we're fixing all those. The electrician's still working on a lot of things for us, most importantly, they're separating the police server, they were doing a whole bunch of low voltage pulling of line, because for state law, the police server has to be separate, it cannot be a combined server with the city just because of the records that hold, so. They're doing that project right now, and that's in the budget already, we talked to you guys about that. So yeah, that's all I have, unless you guys have specific questions for me.
Speaking of lights and electrical lights out, I noticed this morning, there's, there's at least three or four of our streetlights out.
What time in the morning? Like, was it?
Seven.
Because if.
They're still on.
Well, if this, they're a photocell, so if the light doesn't hit them till a certain point, they won't go off till the sun hits them at a certain point.
That's what was happening this morning. Some are on, most of them are on, and.
Every once in a while, I'll come early enough in where there's still a couple that are hidden by buildings that are still on, and everything else is off.
Closer to the City Hall.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's just a photocell, not, the sun hasn't hit it yet.
Yeah.
Should have mentioned when I was down talking to you today, Hawkins Park, the new trees, are we gonna get them fenced?
Yeah, so.
Mr. Beaver's gonna come along there.
I know.
They're gonna be stubs.
Yeah, we will get them, using the same kind of stuff you use, but just a bigger version, yeah.
Anything else for the city administrator? Okay, thank you, Josette. Items from the counselors, mayor.
I will be, well, I may be remote for our next meeting.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, and I would like to actually, city administrator, compliment them on getting any kind of a CBG grant in, having suffered through it. It was a joint effort. It was, it's a mess, the system is a mess, good job. Finger's crossed. It's open.
Congratulations on the docks, that's awesome.
Yeah.
That'll be really fun to look forward to next year, having brand-new docks and, and then a brand-new walk-in dock, 20, at least 20 feet out from the boat ramp, so.
Yeah.
That'll be really nice, so. Okay, any other items from Dale?
We have a couple concerned citizens here tonight, I think that bears counsel least being informed as to what the city's done, or staff's done, and where we're at. If we, you know, where we can go with this, I don't, I mean, it's a little touchy because my cousin, so it's a little bit of a conflict of interest on my part, but I don't, you know, I don't know, this, this whole homeless thing, I think we're gonna have to have more discussions besides just that issue up there, so. But I'm just looking for other counselors, where do you want to go, if we need to have a workshop on this, or, or just get a feedback from our staff?
Yeah.
What's been tried, what's the laws, where are we at?
Do you guys want an update at your next meeting of?
Sure.
Of that, okay.
Great.
So we're gonna get a report for next meeting, and then we'll decide if we want to do a work.
Yeah, and just tell you what's been.
What's been done.
How.
And what our.
Us and legal see the code, and what you'd have to do potentially to not allow, or, and what the current law is, because there, we will have to be enacting a law, because currently there's a right to rest in the state of Oregon, and so there's no, nothing that stops any of, anybody currently from camping right out on the grass in the front of City Hall. So you have to put in, you have to put an ordinance in place specific to public facilities, and then you have to designate where you will allow them to rest. Because you can't just keep pushing people, that's not allowed here, so. I can bring you all that information, and then potentially we should in the, over the winter, work on that ordinance to set aside where we do not want someone stopping to rest, and where we are going to designate a spot where we will be okay with it, and what the process of that is. So there's just a lot of things that go into it. And I can bring the update of that specific situation and situations like it in the city, and how we see the code and legal sees the code, what's allowed, not allowed, what's happened, everything.
Okay. Get it on the agenda for.
Day 18.
Anything else, Dawn?
I was in Yam Hill today, whether we put these in or not, I thought the speed limit sign was very nice to a person. At the bottom, it says thank you when you go to speed limit.
Oh, not, it also is not so nice when you're speeding.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Tells you to slow down.
Not so nice?
No, thank you.
Red. Yeah. Say no, thank you.
Any little job, I would like to see one like this. Encourage people, because I thought it was very nice.
Yeah, okay. And I like the blue color, too, of the numbers.
Dale?
We were talking about CZ Trail, C-Scott got it out online, but this week they'll be paving from the whole trailhead up the hill there to alleviate some of that hazardous biking, downhill biking that got in there. So, and that'll be a real opportunity for our citizens, I know I've even talked to Angie. She likes to go hiking and stuff, and I said, well, you know, you should look at that one, because it, she wanted something a little more challenging, and I said, well, that wouldn't challenge it, because I've been up and down it, and I know I'm huffing and puffing halfway up the hill, and so anyhow, I, I think it's gonna be, once they get that trailhead all put in, and with that being paved, it's gonna be a real asset.
Yeah.
For the town here, and for the local hikers, and then the bikers, so.
Thank you, Dale. Anybody else? Well, thank you for your participation, we're now ready for a action item summary.
Okay, so I'm gonna update the Parks Committee at their November meeting, should they have one on the senior park planning. Staff is going to print the letter of support for the Banks Vernonia Linear Trail and have the mayor sign it. Staff is not gonna forget to fence the Hawkins Park trees before winter, make sure the guys are getting on that. And staff will be bringing an update to the. And staff will be bringing an update to the next meeting on what's happened and why for the D Street issue.
And I'll also be scheduling a work session at some point in the future.
For this?
For training.
Training, yeah.
I should do that too. So we'll have the training and then-
Council roles.
Council roles.
Now, do you need additional corrections from, like Counselor Wagner?
There were ones that you guys didn't voice.
Wanted the changes?
Well, but that's just my personal observations. I think that until everyone has a voice in it, I don't think that I should be giving-
Yeah, and he'll be, he'll be online, so he'll be able to take.
Right.
Yeah. I think that'll be adequate enough at the meeting.
Yeah.
We won't be adopting it then.
Yeah.
It'll just be a discussion.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think if we had some changes beforehand that we would-
Well, no, she has what you've said tonight. Is there anything you didn't?
Counselor Wagner has some.
Yeah, there's a couple others.
You get those to step.
That's what I asked, yeah.
I, I see what you're saying now, okay. But I think other people have additional comments that they haven't even considered, like Counselor Ash.
But the closer it can be to working document, the better.
We're just trying to get you been prepared ahead of time.
I am happy to provide. Good.
All right, well, thank you all for being, your participation tonight. And Steve, thank you for your input and I'll adjourn the meeting at 8:35 PM. Meeting adjourned.
I'll get some good pictures of Watkins.